Public meeting in order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome. This is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting Tuesday, April 23rd, and we're gonna move right into the consent agenda. This is for approval of payroll, April 19th, 2019, approval of minutes, April 9th, 2019, and approval of claims, April 11th, April 18th, and April 18th of 2019. Then we're gonna get into artistic services agreements for the next show coming up, and I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Blaney.
All right, we have artistic services agreements for Madeline Woodrop Faden, Stephanie Reader, Main Stage Productions, Adam Gustus, Byron Sanoshi, Brian Moore, Stephanie Reader, Musical Theater, Bethany Borgo, James Simon, Jared Coller, Chris Lindstrat, Rachel Lauer, and Nicholas De Jarley.
Okay, and that is the consent agenda. Open it up to the floor. Motion approved. We have a motion of second for the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Close same sign. Motion carries. Under new business, we'd like to make an announcement. If you recall last, the end of last February, we had a lot of flooding down on the Kankakee River, and also moved upstream as well, too. Out of a lot of the damage that incurred during that flooding event, the county lost a bridge down there. This is Bridge 73, and this is 50 West, and that's over Cobb Ditch. That road has been closed since the flooding because the bridge was, it basically just went away. And we, part of our stormwater management department and EMA were working on cataloging all the information, all the damage that happened to the county, and we've submitted to FEMA over a year ago on a lot of these requests. I think it was last week, we heard back from FEMA, and as part of the emergency declaration for funding, Porter County is going to be awarded $720,000 from FEMA to replace Bridge 73. So, you know, we have the money. We're getting ready to start putting all the pieces together to quickly build that bridge. It's a very rural bridge, but we're gonna take a look at weights and widths and other things because there's a lot of agricultural activity down there. We wanna make sure that if we're gonna rebuild this bridge that we get it a little bit better than what its original intended purpose was. So, it's out looking forward. But again, we wanted to let the county know and the citizens know that because of the flooding and the events that took place, I think this is another feather in the cap of the stormwater management department and the things that they've done. I can tell you, from firsthand experience, there was a lot of work that went into all this. I mean, a tremendous amount of work cataloging all this stuff. It's the federal government, right? So, very, very happy that we're getting an outcome on this, and I think we're still expecting some more money to trickle in over time. We got some other things. They're all shaking their head yes, good. So, we're gonna have more money coming in. We'll keep everybody apprised as this goes down. But that's a good outcome, and we can get back to getting that bridge built and opening that road up to open that area up for the citizens that live down there. So, I don't know if anybody else wanted to comment on anything, but I just wanted to point that out and let the people know. Next up on the agenda, we have INEDICO/BAS, and this is approval of claims of $110,607.48. And I'm assuming that this is part of the cleanup from moving away from INEDICO and BAS. Scott?
It is. These are claims that were service states that are budding up to when we moved over to our current health insurance provider. So, as you can see from the paperwork that was submitted for this, the total amount of claims, the total build originally was a little over 663,000, and after this all sudden, the invoice amounts $110,607.48. So, this looks like the final runout of, or the continuing final runout of the INEDICO/BAS health insurance claim. So, at this point, we're far enough away from those contracts that we need to have them approved as they come up in the commissioners' meetings. So, that's what these are, the continuing holdover from that scenario that we were using.
Scott, is there any estimation on what's left out there? I know a lot of this is still in negotiations with the healthcare providers and what have you, but is there still some...
My understanding is that there's very few left.
Some outliers?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion of second to approve claims for INEDICO/BAS, our recent health insurance provider for the county, of $110,607.48. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Close same sign. Motion carries. Next up, animal control, animal shelter services contract with Ogden Deans. And open it up to the floor. Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion of second for animal control and animal shelter service agreement with Ogden Deans. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Close same sign. Motion carries. Last on the commissioners' agenda, we're gonna have a discussion regarding American Structure Point with the Willow Creek Road Extension. And Scott, you wanna sort of give us a scenario as to where we're at on all this, and... Back to Scott.
Sure. I think Mr. Thompson can come up. He was part of this, and I think Mr. Murphy can come up also.
Morning, Chris.
Morning, Mr. Thompson.
Morning, Robert.
Morning.
So, Bob, why don't you give us sort of a little bit of an update as to where we're at today and what we're going to be talking about today, just to sort of give everybody an update on where we're at in this point in time on this project?
Currently, we have completed an environmental study and a route analysis for this particular phase of Willow Creek, and I'm gonna use phase because NERCY through the funding has phased it, okay? And so, this is gonna be Phase One. It's from 700 North down to 130. And I know I mentioned that we completed the environmental, and I know Chris is gonna correct me on that. We have gotten to the environmental to the point where we need to now go forward with public hearings and do a submittal to FHWA for the actual approval of this document. So, we're at that point right now. We've done the route analysis, and we're at the last step for the environmental approval. What the supplemental agreement is gonna be looking at is taking the actual engineering and starting the right-of-way engineering for this particular phase from 700 North down to State Road 130, and developing it for construction purposes. It takes us up with this agreement up to the point of what we would refer to as the right-of-way phase within the federal highway process.
So, we would end up, so this, the overall contract's $1,091,250. That would get us through the route study completion, environmental completion, and the engineering completed.
Right.
Would leave us at the right-of-way stage, which would be the right-of-way acquisition. Of that $1,091,250, NERCY is prepared to match 80% of that contract amount, or $873,000.
Correct.
And then our match would be $218,250. And that looks like it is spread out over 19, 20, and 21, basically, to pay for those things.
Correct.
Before we would get to right-of-way acquisition. When we get to right-of-way acquisition, assuming all of the route study, environmental, and the engineering, after all the public hearings and all the public input goes in a positive manner, then we would have to make a decision on how we would fund the right-of-way acquisition and how we would fund the continuing 80-20 match that would apply to the construction costs of the Willow Creek Extension.
Correct.
And so, the estimates that we have at this point in time, obviously, NERCY would have to have additional funding to be matching at the 80% level. And according to the estimates we have now, the total project from a county standpoint is just, it's $1,937,250. That is all encompassing, including this contract that is on the docket for today, and that seems to be potentially, if the schedule were to hold, something around 2022, 2023 would be the time when the remaining portion of our match would need to happen, assuming, again, all after the study, the environmental and the engineering and the public input turned into a positive direction and something the council and the commissioners wanted to move forward on.
Correct.
So, basically, this gets us through engineering, and then we would have to start working with NERCY and to get matching money, and we'd have to work with the council to get the funding for that, and so there will be kind of a built-in pause. This agreement doesn't take us to building a road. It takes us to that we have a road design.
Correct.
So, that is what we're looking at as far as the cost at this point. And so, this one that's actually on the docket for today would be a match of $218,250 of the county's portion, and NERCY's would be $873,000.
And I think those funds from NERCY are in play. I mean, we've secured...
That's correct.
Those funds.
They have been approved, yes.
So, now it's up to us to come up with our 20% of this next phase, and that's what we're, that's what we're dealing with today.
Correct.
And what is the overall length of the road, the stretch here we're talking about? It's just a little over two miles, isn't it?
Not quite.
Not even quite two miles?
Right.
Just a little...
Close to two miles.
Close to two miles.
Yeah. It's like a 1.8, 1.7, something around that, right?
So, again, for everybody that might not have heard, Bob, this is from 700 North as to where the Portage town, the Portage city limits are, the boulevard. So, it will be from there, then just down to State Road 130.
Yes.
And that's the first phase of this project only. And I think I covered some of the high points and the low points, huh? I'd also like to point out, too, in this area of this proposed extension, obviously, we don't know all the particulars in the particular route that's gonna take place. That's all part of this process. I'd just like to point out, too, from the county's perspective, you know, we're looking at this, obviously, to alleviate a lot of high traffic that are on our county roads right now that aren't designed for this. But I also think a very important thing for the commissioners, too, because we also are a main part of the stormwater management board, this is an area in the county that has a lot of significant drainage issues in that area, up and through that whole area. So, by creating a road, I think we'll also be able to direct and control our water a lot more efficiently in these areas because of the ditches and the rightaways and things that are gonna be created from all this. So, it sort of gives us our first step into taking a look at that area for, you know, drainage. Maybe there's a possibility of picking up a few regulated drains up in there. I know that we've had some discussions with landowners, not with, of this road, but just of ditches and things up there that already exist that we've been looking at. So, I think this is a, it's not just a road. I think it's a little bit more encompassing for us to alleviate and solve other problems that we have in the county as well, too. They will also help first responders. It's gonna help a lot of things, just being able to get, get people there quicker and with less taxing of our other county roads. So, that's, that's sort of my...
You're correct. This is, a new alignment project of this nature is a transformative type of investment. It will, for 100 years in the future, will provide benefits to the community, not only in access, but in improvements to adjacent properties related to the, to the access that's provided by this investment.
Well, yeah, and the general public, I hope the general public understands, you know, this, this idea was not born out of wanting something convenient. This was born out of necessity. We have to have another north-south fair affair, or, you know, eight, 10 years from now, we can be in some real trouble. We're already seeing that trouble on Route 6.
NERCY's studies in this area, too, show that there's gonna be over 200% reduction in congestion on the other county roads in the area, and that will be very beneficial to us and our highway department. It'll also help with air quality, and I think it's going to promote orderly growth as well coming out of Portage.
And we, we, this is Phase One. Obviously, Phase Two would be the 30. So, that would be the projected Phase Two. That's why this route is basically the direction that Structure Point has been given, is that wherever this route ends up, it has to have the best and most amount of options that...
Has to have a path moving to that.
A path to get to 30, because that's part of this. This isn't just, this isn't a project to 130. This is a, probably a long-term project to 30 at some point. But we have to crawl before we walk, and at this point, we're just waiting to get us to engineering, get us through the public comment, get us through all the input, and be able to see how this works out. And if this is something positive and going in the right direction, then to 30 would be the next study.
Correct. And a project of this nature, in my experience and Bob's experience, is a multi-year investment. It's, just by its nature, a transformational project. And the most important aspects you're undertaking today is to get it started, keep it moving ahead. It does have NERCY endorsement. It's included as the number three project in their regional corridor study with their recommendation to move the project forward. So, it's a matter of maintaining a clear path and moving ahead so that we keep the project on course for complete construction over the next several years.
And if, and just to put some sort of a timing on this, assuming our schedule holds, which they rarely do, because the biggest contingency that we have to deal with is that to move forward past this, NERCY would have to have around $4 or $5 million of match money.
Correct.
And so, the speed of which NERCY can produce that will have a great effect on the schedule, which will also have an effect on when our matching money would have to be available.
Correct.
And so, even assuming that they were able to hold the schedule we have, we're looking at 2023 for, assuming everything stays right on track, NERCY has their match money, we have our match money, everybody wants to move forward. This is gonna be in the 2023 before there's a road there.
That's realistic, correct.
So, that's kind of the horizon here. It's not, this isn't gonna be something that's done in August.
Correct.
Yeah, I think breaking it up into phases was the right thing to do. It sort of mirrors where NERCY is right now.
Correct.
And so, to go up and try to hit a home run instead of a single, I think it'll get more attention. We can keep the pressure on. I think the county hasn't really done a new road in a long time, and I think it will all give us the opportunity and the timing to sort of work through the process and understand it better. So, I think when we get to the Phase Two part, we ought to be pretty good ambassadors of how to do this afterwards. So, I think if we're gonna learn on the first one, let's learn on the smaller piece and, you know, get the project moving and get it rolling, and then learn and adapt and duck in and out as we need to go. So, you know, and I'd also like to point out that this, you know, this may affect, this will probably affect the city to the north, Portage, and we've had discussions with the current mayor and any new mayor that's coming in that, you know, they're gonna be involved in this. We're not creating a semi corridor. We're not, this isn't what this is about. This is more for day-to-day traffic and trying to get people to move within the county a little bit easier. I know one of the things that we've been talking about with the highway department is since that 130, since we're only gonna go to 130, we still need that section of road between 130 and 30 to get there. So, we're now studying Sedley Road a little bit more seriously. We're trying to take a look at, you know, what would we need to do to that road to make that be able to take some of that additional traffic that it will get. So, there's a lot that we're, we're not just studying this piece. We're still trying to study of how we get north to south or the other way, to where we, you know, because it may be another seven, eight, nine years before we even have that other, the bigger piece. So, we're putting contingency plans in place that we have the number of what it would cost to make Sedley Road an all-weather road. And we're also looking at one of the turning lanes on the 30 at Sedley Road, because we know there's a huge backup there in the morning with people going west. So, we have our highway engineer looking at what would it take to acquire a little piece of land and put a right-hand turning lane there so we can keep flushing the traffic out and keep it moving. So, we're not, we're looking at this very seriously and wanna get it moving, but we also have other plans in place to try and keep that, that side of the county moving in a positive direction. So...
And that's appropriate, maintaining a holistic view of how the context of this project, as it builds out, affects the other parts of the area of the county beyond the actual immediate impacts of the construction. So, I appreciate the commissioners' view of the type of impacts and mitigation that's involved in a project of this size.
And I think if anybody's ever concerned about this, they ought to sort of look to the west and southwest and see what's going on over in Lake County and the amount of big farms and subdivisions that are coming in. The flight out of Illinois and the flight to northwest Indiana is real. It's fast. I think from our perspective, we don't wanna end up like another Schaumburg or another area where you just got massive, massive traffic and nobody moves. And I've talked to elected official over there in the St. John area, and, you know, people are more concerned, not about the development, but just the traffic that just doesn't go anywhere. And so, I think we're a little bit sensitive to that, too, and we just wanna make sure that we're out in front of things a little bit more. And this certainly doesn't put us way, you know, puts us way out in front three years, four years, but it's just all part of the meat grinder of how we're looking at this, so...
And this is not gonna be another false start, as we've seen over the years with that road. It's gonna, it's gonna get built or it's not, but if it doesn't get built, it's gonna be for very good reasons. It's not gonna be because we just decided to walk towards something else that was shiny, so...
Right. Very good.
I think lastly, it's important for everyone to know that, as we have had discussions in the past with Portage and the surrounding areas, ultimately, once this is, if this gets passed today, then we've already been talking with Mr. Thompson about looking at an overlay for this area.
Land use and overlay plan.
A land use overlay, so that we stick with the type of development that we have basically committed to at this point in time, which is rooftops, residential with necessary neighborhood commercials. You know, we're looking at what would be needed if that area actually expands out into rooftops, but that's what we ultimately would be looking at on that overlay, so that we can put some additional controls over the stretch to allow that to happen. So, that will be one thing the planning commission will start working on now, is with that overlay and what those additional kind of ordinances would look like as far as to keep the development kind of what we want and keeping with what kind of traffic we want on it.
And hopefully dispel some of the rumors and other things that people think are gonna happen, if we can come out on the front end and put that overlay in. Then I think your intentions are pretty clear as to what you want it to be up there, and I think that'll take a little, that'll maybe calm some fears and some other things that are out there. We have a couple of council members in the audience. I didn't know if they wanted to step up and say anything, or you're here, you came, so I figured I'd ask. Dan?
Yeah, I'll just say a few words. We've had conversations, as you know, over the last couple of weeks, and certainly it's just sort of geared up for this meeting. I think conversations amongst the council members sort of mirror what you guys were talking about. We talked about this being eventual project 30. I think we all see that as sort of an endgame tactic. I have had conversations with a couple of folks in Portage. And the concerns that they might have, you know, we're not there yet, and I'm sure of them that we'll all be having conversations and talking a little bit about their concerns, what impact it might have on their, with the big road. But from the council's perspective, we wanna be visionaries, too, and we wanna see development. We wanna interplay into our county, a place where people can come and build and stay and the traffic, all these concerns, but certainly from the fiscal body's concerns, seeing more AB come into the county and give relief to our existing taxpayers is something that we wanna see happen, too. So, as it stands, I'm sure we'll be discussing it a little bit tonight at our council meeting, but generally speaking...
Thanks, Dan. Mike, you have anything to say?
I'm good. I echo what Dan said, and certain of his project.
Thank you. Thank you for showing up today, two guys. I really appreciate it, gentlemen. Any other comments or questions from the board? Any questions of Structure Point or the actual, what they need to do? I think we're... What's that? Yeah, I think we have to, we have to move on the agreement, because it's a funding proportion of the agreement. I know we voted on the whole agreement, but we're voting on the sections as we, we work through it. So, there's a little bit of...
Well, at this point, this is a full revised contract that we're going to, basically supersede everything we've done before with the route study, and this will be the agreement through engineering.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for an agreement with American Structure Point on the next phase of the Willow Creek Road Extension. That's Phase One, from 700 North to State Road 130. All of those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Close same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
And it's a good day for the county, I think. This is forward progress, and that's what we're trying to be up here. So, thank you, Chris. We got a lot of work to do. So...
Definitely.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Okay, now into the pay applications, the fun part of our construction projects. We're gonna go to the Expo Center. This is Pay App Number Eight, in the amount of $157,340.90 for general trades. Open up the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for Panjir Corp. Pay App Number Eight. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Close same sign. Motion carries. We have another pay app for Panjir Corp. It's, again, Pay App Eight. This is for $161,122.85. This is for metal studs, drywall, and acoustics. And I was out there yesterday, and yes, the metal stud and acoustics are up. So, open it up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for Panjir Corp. Pay App Number Eight for metal studs, drywall, and acoustical ceilings. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Close same sign. Motion carries. Next up is Midwest Tile and Interiors, Pay App Number Four, and this is bid category four for flooring. Yes, the carpet is down. All the carpet is down, which is good to see, and the tile, a lot of tile. Open up the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for Midwest Tile and Interiors, Pay App Number Four, for bid category number four. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Close same sign. Motion carries. DA Dodd, there are mechanical people out there, Pay App Number Seven, and this is for the mechanical systems that are out there. They're getting to the end of their draw, too. Open it up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for DA Dodd, Pay App Number Seven. All those in favor signify... in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. I'm going to pause here. I know Commissioner Biggs was out there yesterday. I was out at the Expo yesterday. It's, it's coming along very nicely. It looks like we're going to be ready to go here in another two to three weeks. I would also like to thank the Buildings Facilities Department, the Highway Department. Everybody has stepped up and is helping out out there, and it's just really, really good to see when you have different departments of government all working together for a common cause and a lot of teamwork going on out there, and it's just great to see. I know it gives me always little goosebumps to see that. I, it's just, it's encouraging. Everybody's in it together, and that's, it's just neat. So, thank you, departments, for your time and your effort. I know sometimes it's sort of wedges against your budgets and things like that, and not once has anybody ever said, you know, hey, I got too many men over here, whatever. We're just working through it and working it all out, but it's just, it's just really encouraging and it's good to see. So, next up, the courthouse renovation. Oh, before we move into that, is, is, is our opening party for that, that date set, right?
June 13.
There's the invitation only, which is June 13.
Yes, so June 13th, we have an invitation opening, and then we're putting together a public...
On the 14th, we will be doing the public...
Right.
...grand, or open house from, I believe it's three to six.
Yes. Okay. So, I'll be looking for more information on that. Obviously, the facility will be open, and I'm sure people will be going in there with events and other things before those dates, but those are our two dates where we get to celebrate and show, show everybody what's going on.
Actually, this Saturday, or this, this Saturday, the 27th, is the Be Kind Animals Pet Care Expo, which is going to be in the Expo East. It'll be the first event in the new renovated Expo.
Yep. And Expo East is ready to go. So, it got done a little bit quicker than the main building, but obviously, there's more finishes in the main building, too. So, thanks for that call-out. Next, we're going to move to courthouse renovation. This is Gatlin Plumbing and Heating. This is Pay App Number Four. This is bid category number six for plumbing. Open it up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and second for Gatlin Plumbing and Heating, Pay App Number Four for bid category number six. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up is Midwest Tile and Interiors. This is Pay App Number Five for flooring in the amount of $3,287.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for Midwest Tile and Interiors, Pay App Five for flooring. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Last pay app for courthouse renovation is M-Cor Hire Electric, Pay App Seven for electric work. Open it up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for M-Cor Hire Electric, Pay App Number Seven for electrical work. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Just to give you a little update on the courthouse renovation, a lot of the interiors are done. We got a lot of the bathrooms and that. They're finally finishing up in there. The building is now ADA accessible for handicap folks, so we've, we've taken care of a big problem in a historic building. We now are fully ADA, and it's, it's quite an improvement. We're about a third of the way now through installing all the new windows that are going in, and I think you'll, if you go by and you look carefully, you can see the difference in the two windows and the tinning of the glass and some of the other things. So, and then we have some landscaping yet to do along Lincoln Way and the building. City of Alpo, we worked out with them. They added 17 parking spots along Lincoln Way to give them more downtown parking, and I think that the whole, Commissioner Blaney met with the Parks Department for Valparaiso, and we're working on a conceptual landscaping design that maybe has a little bit of the flair of what Valpo's been doing downtown, but yet sort of follows through with the city's theme and everything else. So, we're trying to work with the City of Alpo to come up with a, a landscape design that fits within the, the landscape of the City of Alpo. So, hopefully, a lot of that will be completed over the next 30 days, and we'll be finalizing that project here very quickly, too. So, so that's sort of the update on the courthouse. Probably another month, and we'll be buttoning it up. So, courthouse and Expo should be done over the next 30 days, and those will be two projects that we can sort of put behind us and move forward on, the other stuff. Next up is North County Annex. We have two bid payouts there. That project is coming along rather nicely. It's, it's coming along quickly, and we got Zilkowski Construction. This is Pay App Number Two for bid category number two. They are the general up there on the project or the construction manager on the project in the amount of $59,578.30.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for Zilkowski Construction, Pay App Number Two for bid category number two. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. We have Pay App Number Three for Zilkowski. This is bid category number one, and this is for $275,060.15.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for Pay App Number Three for Zilkowski Construction, bid category number one. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Okay, got the, got the accounting piece out of the way. Next up is, we have Sheriff Aiden Rennels. This was an ordinance establishing a fund for the deposit of proceeds for the Indiana Drug Enforcement Association Highway Interdiction Team Program.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. We have a motion and second on second reading for an ordinance establishing a fund for the deposit of proceeds for the Indiana Drug Enforcement Association Highway Interdiction Team Program. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next, Highway Department. Now, on, okay, we got, okay, so it's, it's right on the screen. Got it. Did the agenda, thank you, did the agenda have additional, I should try and make it. Before we get into the discussion here, on the over agenda that was posted, it had a request for an additional appropriation. This is a transfer, and it, it shows up here that it's a transfer on our board, but I just wanted to let everybody know, if you have a written document, that we change it. This is a transfer, not an additional appropriation, especially for your council members. So, go ahead, guys. Good morning.
Morning. So, this is for a transfer for the Bytuminus aggregate for our chip and seal when we turned the budget in last year. Obviously, we did not know that we were going to get all new chip and seal equipment, even though it had been talked about, so we didn't really adjust the aggregate budget. Now, we need to put some more in the aggregate. Last year, we did 26 miles of chip and seal. This year, we're planning on doing around 50 plus, so we're almost doubling last year's, and so we need to buy more stone to do that, and that's what this transfer is for.
Okay. Any questions at the board?
Go get it.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second, request for transfer from account 2362 by Tuminus in the amount of $225,000 to account 2360 aggregate, and this is for purchase of stone for the chip and seal program that we are now doing ourself. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, you got a double drum roller.
Yep, goes part of the chip and seal program. After we started looking into a couple of used rollers, we got a couple of prices, and with the amount it cost to rent, it would take us two years to pay it off. So...
Pretty good ROI.
Yeah, we went to, we went to Rowland. We found a machine there. It has almost 4,000 hours on it. That'd be the 27,500. The Westside Tractor is the one that I would, that I would recommend. I know it's more money, but it's, only has 1,100 hours on it. And if you think about it, at 4,000 hours, it's about 8,000 is all you're going to get out of it before you start doing major repairs. 1,100 hours, we're going to get a lot of, a lot more years out of it.
And we're going to be using this a lot more now.
Yeah, yeah. It's going to roll 50 miles of road this year.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the Westside Tractor sale for a double drum roller at $36,900.
Second. We have a motion and second for a double drum roller purchase for the Highway Department from Westside Tractor Sales in the amount of $36,900, a piece of equipment that has 1,100 hours on it versus the other bid that had...
4,000, almost 4,000.
4,000 hours on it. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
And this will all help us get towards, we, on our, we passed out, Jim passed out a road list to you guys. That's combined effort of about 118 miles of preservation on our roads.
118 miles this year. Wow.
So, we're going in the right direction.
Weather permitting.
Yes.
Weather permitting. Right.
As long as it doesn't snow again in June, we'll, should be fine. But, yeah, so we're moving very rapidly with the hiring of a new engineer and a lot of help out of our Development Stormwater Department as well. So, starting to work pretty well together, I think.
Yep. I know you guys were out at the fairgrounds yesterday. There's one lane there that, old asphalt, had some drainage issues, and before we started out grinding up our roads, we went out there to do a little test, and we grinded up that whole section yesterday, and that machine is some else.
Yeah, the last time they did it was when the, when 49 got paved the last time. So, that's all, so it was a good, great test spot. We're not putting you guys in jeopardy with traffic. So, and it went, I think, pretty well.
The other thing we found out, too, in talking with Highway, is we, the parking lot at the Expo is pretty big, and we were looking at, it needs to be sealed, blacktop sealed, and we were thinking about going out and getting prices. Well, we just bought this new distributor truck that, that puts down tar and oil, and without, with changing the heads, we can actually do our own sealing with our own equipment now. So, we're going
to... It was a $330 tip purchase to spray a fog seal over the whole thing, which will keep it, bring it, bring it at least another year.
So, now we can use our equipment to even do some other things that I think will save the county quite a bit of money. I, I could imagine just getting an outside bid on that parking lot. It would have been...
It's 20, go ahead.
28,000 square yards or something like that.
Yeah.
It's like two, almost two miles of lane, miles of road in that parking lot and main stretch and drag in there.
Yep.
So, we can do it for a fraction of what other people can.
Use that equipment.
Yep.
Well, it's the same with the chip and seal. I did the, I did the math, which I was really shocked. We're going to do over 56 miles of chip and seal road this year.
About 50, yeah.
I did the math.
Oh, yep. So, somewhere in there, yeah.
Don't argue.
I'm not, no, I'm not mad. He said it was 8.4. I just, I just like to, you know, shoot low, weather permitting, you know?
Yeah, right.
My, my point is, I, that number, that many miles of road, that's, that's almost unheard of.
This year, chip and seal alone covered all the miles we did last year. So, and that would be 55, oops, 55 miles of crack seal and, and some good paving on Calumet and Meridian, 400 North and sturdy road and good, good long-lasting roads.
Yeah. You guys have a very aggressive year in front of you, but I, I think you're up to it.
Yep, we're up for it, no doubt.
Yep. Good. Thank you very much. Thanks, gentlemen. Have a good day.
Thanks, Jim.
Up next, Ray Cloyde. He's our Facilities Department.
Thanks, Ray.
Head.
Good morning.
Morning, Ray.
Morning.
So, you got, what do you got here, Facility IT Group?
Yeah, this is for the JDC. I'd like to enter an agreement with them for our service maintenance for three years at a rate of $2,585 a year.
Motion to approve.
Second. I don't know what they're doing out there, but they really like you for some reason.
Good deal. Thanks.
Hopefully, you're just fixing.
No, that's all we're doing. Thank you.
Okay, we have, do we have a motion?
And a second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Ray. Next up, we got Bob Thompson. This is Development and Stormwater Management. Morning, Bob.
Morning.
If you all remember, at our last meeting on a first reading, we approved a zoning amendment for territorial authority for Altoff Homes. Scott, you just want to explain it one more time so we have it on the record at both readings as to what we're doing here?
All right. Because we're in a census year, there's a moratorium on cities and towns officially annexing property in 2019. The city, so when this, Altoff Homes, this is a, what is this, a continuation of which subdivision?
It's, oh... Phase three of... Up there on Burlington Beach. I'm sorry, I forgot the... Hawthorne? See, Todd, we called you from the gala. All right. So, on the north side of Burlington Beach Road, there's Hawthorne subdivision. Then Hawthorne North subdivision was done by a different developer. This is Hawthorne Hills, a third developer, Altoff Homes. So, it's, they're all contiguous to one another, but this part, which straddles the township line, center township, Washington Township, is actually in the county jurisdiction.
So, basically, we were approached by Altoff and the City of Alpo through Todd to deal with, how do we deal with the annexation in a census year along with subdivision approval process moving forward. The subdivision approval process, as we looked at it, probably wasn't going to result in houses being built in 2019. It's probably something that's going to be more like 2020.
Correct.
So, basically, the direction we took was, if, but if the City of Valparaiso was serious about annexing this in, basically because of the utility issue, that they were going to go ahead and take their action, which they have, that doesn't go into a total effect until the end of 2019.
Right, January 1st of 2020.
Yeah. If the City of Alpo did that, then instead of our planning department planning the subdivision and going through that, this is the process to allow the City of Alpo to do the planning because eventually, they're going to have this, and now that they've gone through those steps of doing it, they are officially going to have it in 20, at the beginning of 2020.
Correct.
And so, they're going to do the time, energy, et cetera, to design it instead of us, in a nutshell.
Yes.
And I don't think we have any county roads out there that impacts us here. This is all within the city.
It is. There is connectivity to the subdivision to the north, which would be in the county, but that, that's the only connection, if you will, literally.
So, this is against the territorial authority for this parcel of property to the City of Valparaiso to plan it.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. We have a motion and second on second reading for a zoning amendment for territorial authority for Altoff Homes. This is second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Hey, Todd.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Next up, Bob, you have a DLZ supplemental agreement for preliminary engineering and right-of-way acquisition services. I'm guessing this is for...
100 South.
100 South, okay.
Yes. The reason is, is this is started in 2014 with the project number within DOT. At that time, there were 45 parcels that they were looking at, at his, since grown to this day, to over 50. So, the agreement you're looking at goes up to 55 parcels as far as looking at right-of-way engineering and right-of-way acquisition. So, that's the reason for the supplemental agreement. Plus, there is a few other items in there as far as preliminary engineering, dealing with poor soils around the intersection of 725 West and 100 South.
Yeah. I drove through there the other day. That is sort of a messy area in there.
Messy.
How are the meetings going with the homeowners?
We're getting started. I know Matt is up there working on the actual letter that's going to be sent out to them, so we're going to be starting those kitchen table discussions here shortly.
Great. Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for DLZ. This is a supplemental agreement for preliminary engineering and right-of-way acquisition services for the 100 South project that the county's working with the state of Indiana on. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Then next, you got awards for the Community Crossing Grant bids?
Correct. I don't know what the, okay, there's the order. North Calumet Road, we are recommending the award go-to... North Calumet Road, we are recommending the award go to Reith Riley, with their bid of $414,647.50. As mentioned, this is for North Calumet, this goes from Valparaiso City Limits up to US Highway 6.
What was that number, Jim, Bob? We probably need to do these separately, right? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have an award, a low bid, to North Calumet Ave, so this is a Valparaiso City Limits to US Highway 6, Reith Riley, $414,647.50. Second. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Next, Alpo City Limits to 6 again on Meridian Road.
Correct, and we're recommending the award go to Washington Kelly, for their bid of
Vote for the low bid.
This was the low bid, yes.
Motion to approve Washington Kelly for the Meridian Road, City Limits to Highway 6, at $330,531.90.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Last road.
This is Sturdy Road, it's from the railroad crossing, up to US 30. Basically, the cemetery there is on the west side, and on the east side is the entrance to Pennahill Road going into Walmart, so that section right there of Sturdy Road. We are recommending the contract go to the low bidder here, Reith Riley Construction, at $66,241.10.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, we have a motion, a second, for Sturdy Road Railroad Crossing to US Highway 30. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Bob, are these all micro?
No, these are going to be all reconstruction, I'm looking at this, I mean, it's part of this Community Crossings Grant, and I can read off every single one of these roads, they're going to be looking at milling asphalt, it varies on the type of road, they did, I know Matt did, Gavlek, our highway engineer, did some corings out there, they'll vary with the milling from one and a half to two inches, plating a new tack coat, and then applying a new HMA surface on this, and then they'll have to go back in and actually do the painting themselves. We used to sub that out later, or something like that, but this is all in one project on this.
And I think I'd also like to be remiss not to say, this year, and what we're paving this year, with our new county highway engineer, Matt Gavlek, we've also changed a lot of our specifications on pavement material that the county's going to be using, and we're sort of really starting to up our game on using a more weather-resistant, little longer-lasting material.
We are following in that specifications on this, and we're also, it's part of the contract with the, the construction company that's been awarded a bid, will have to take some of this material and actually have it tested, and have to hit parameters. If they do not hit within those parameters, then they, we start deducting...
Yep.
...contract money from them.
Stay tuned.
Yes.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Yeah, blue pen, don't go... Jim, we got to sign that today. Okay, so, because it's got to be there. Is it here? It's here. Here's the one.
There's two of them.
Yeah.
Can I use the black pen?
Okay, next up, this is the Valpo Vets Corvette Club, I think you remember our last meeting, we had a request to use the north side, they wanted to use the courthouse for their car show, which they have for many years, but because of all the landscaping and grass seating and stuff we're doing around there, we just thought it would be better to move it, so at our last meeting, Kevin Paiser for the museum was here and heard, and reached out to the folks, and now we're going to have that event at the museum lawn on June 15th, Father's Day Car Show, between 8:00 and 2:00 PM, at the museum yard. Open it up to the floor to...
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for the Valpo Vets Corvette Club, to use the north side of the museum lawn on Saturday, June 15th, for their annual Father's Day Car Show. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Next up is Porter Mason Lodge, number 137, they do this every year, it's a request to sell the daily onions, they need to get me a bag, I did it last year, they were good. But I think what I'd like to do here is make a revision to this approval, to where, again, we move away from the courthouse lawn, and we have it here at the admin building, on the plaza. And so, I would like to make the motion and amend from the courthouse lawn to the admin plaza, for the Porter Mason Lodge, number 137. Kathy, would you communicate that to John Miller, please? So, I'll throw that out to the floor as amended. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, for the request for the Porter Mason Lodge, 137, to sell the daily onions on the admin plaza on May 4th, 2019. And this is in conjunction with the members of the ORAC Shriners out of Michigan City. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Last up, we have Alpo Events, has requested to use the Porter County Admin Garage free charge for vendors and visitors of the Valparaiso Art Festival, which is held on Saturday 29th and Sunday 30th. The city is offering to pay a flat fee to cover our expense. The following roads will be closed for the event, Indiana from Washington Street to Napoleon Street and Lafayette Street, Monroe Street to Indiana Street.